I'd like to call a meeting to order, the Daniel Town Council meeting Monday, June 3rd, 2019. Like I say, I'd like to see Mary, she hasn't been sailing well for a few days and we have all our packets, so we should be able to take care of all the business that we need to take care of this evening. Any public comment concerning any issues that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay. So, the second item will be a public hearing for 2018-2019 budgets to allow changes in revenues and expenses for possible adoption and amended budgets. I have a resolution if that is going to flip that, so if all of us have that in front of us, it would be the 2018 amended budget. So this would've been something that we worked on last month. We did revise the number to make that work, and so this is the revised 2019 budget. Chair, I intend to motion to go into the public hearing. If we didn't do that, I just talked about where you go to motion to the public hearing.
Do we, yeah, you want to say what we changed on it before we go to other hearing?
That would be fine. I'm going to speak to that. But two, one's total change, or the one's that has changed?
Yeah, just the ones we changed.
Couple.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because we was over in a couple of spots, you want me to do that?
Yep, you put mine.
Okay, I did find my other one.
I'm forgetting my case number.
Okay, so we had to move a couple of things. We had employee benefits, we had some catch-up to do. We're at 9,000, we budgeted 42, so we increased that to 10,000, knowing that we had one month left. The other one was 3,500 for dues and subscriptions. We are at 37, we budgeted 18, so that was another flip that we had to move, so we budgeted into $4,000 into that one. The next one, admin office supplies. We had budgeted $8,000, we didn't need that much, we took that down to $5,000. On page two.
Let's see, I didn't see that one.
It's down at the bottom of page one, one, two, three, fourth one up.
Oh, so the public work supplies?
No, admin.
Yes, if I go to admin supplies.
Admin office supplies.
I see 81, 91. But I don't see a 5,000 anywhere.
And so this is the actual, on the 18, it came in actual, but, and so it came in at, as we saw, 81, 92, and that's...
Well, John, I don't see 950 dollars.
Yeah, but I don't see where it was changed to 5,000. I don't understand the changes you're saying.
And I guess I was currently looking at the 2018 actual. So, 2018 budget.
So it's 951, actual, right? Is that what I'm looking at, the same one?
Well, it is, it says 951, and then we've got the 2019, the budget, it said at 8,000.
Right.
And the original one, on the very end, was a 5,000.
Right, so that one should be changed to 5,000.
Oh, so...
So the revised budget, the revised budget, that one's 5,000, not 8,000.
That's why we do this.
I was reading amended. Is it amended?
You there?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so on this one, I see it.
Now, that should be the budget worksheet that finishes at 10 general fund 7119.
Okay, we all there?
Yep.
Okay, on to page two, second item down, admin accounting auditing. 35 actual, we had 55 in the budget, we increased that 500 to 6,000. And we went down to public work supplies repair maintenance.
So why do you think we need to go to 55?
We had some accounting with this, with the grant that we're receiving, we'll have an increase in accounting. And we're not sure what it is, but we, last time we did, we had that, they charged us more money for our audit.
So there's an audit increase and partisan accounting as well, that's both involved.
We don't know what the bill will be, but we know it won't be lower.
The user's going to be, I think, 55. If we spend the money, it pushes over that limit to where the cost of the audit will be 55, still at 35.
Is that correct?
Yes. And again, that was, that was our last audit, that's what it cost us, so I'm sure that went up. Okay, the next item we changed was down to public work supplies repair and maintenance. We had 8,000 in there. We spent six, knowing that we have voters coming still. What else did we have? Something else that was coming there? Mary told us again what it was. Anyway, we went to 10,000 on that one. Is that right?
Yeah, public work supplies repair.
Okay. Then everything else is good until page five. On page five, we had water testing. So with the new well, we're going to have additional water testing that's going to come into play. We are at 1902, we budgeted 2,000. We changed that to 4,000, not knowing, all of our, all of our testing, a lot of municipalities will push that off till after July and put it in the next budget. We have not done that. We pushed ahead with our testing, and so those tests will be coming back before July. So the cost will be up. That's it.
And well testing is supposed to be, once again, we're estimating on those costs because we're going to have, we're going to be testing here in about two weeks, they may be done with that little budget in two weeks.
Yeah. Now whether the billing will be back or not, I don't know, but that's, that was our best guess.
So on water engineering, on page five. Where's that? That's Lee. Trying to see, it's hard to read, that line's going across. Water engineering's 3,000 in 2017. Is that right? Yeah. So what's this, what's the jump to 35 in 2019 budget? But we, seems like we're doubling there.
Right. Is this in the revised budget?
This is on...
The new, this is the, actually, the new...
That's the next budget?
1920 budget.
1920 budget.
Okay, right now, we're just doing the revised budget for 2018-19, so that's a great question for the next one.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, then let's see. I don't have that on, Ben.
Looking at, see?
You don't have the revised?
I don't have the revised, I don't, I'm sure I have it.
There's going to be, grab one down on Mary, in there. Let's see, that should say the amended 2018-19, not that one, right in front of it?
Yeah.
So that would be the one that you don't have, I think.
Well, I have this one that says amended 2018-19. I don't have this one.
There you go. I still have my copy, we did the worksheet on, so I'm good. Okay. So now, if you're ready to...
If there's no more, if there's any other, I'll run John to take a minute to get...
Well, it's the same thing. On water engineering, on page five of this one. We've got 2019 actual is 168, and then we've got 35, and our revised budget is 35.
There's matching funds for the well, that the town had to contribute to that one. I believe that's part of that, matching funds for the...
So our engineering on our new well and water system.
And I know we've already paid some of those bills, but there may be other ones coming down.
Isn't, isn't, I wouldn't think water engineering would have our match. Seems like our match would go in a different place.
It seemed like there was something we could move over there, right? Could you speak to that?
Yeah. So the reason we did that is between the time I had and on our hydrogeologist, on both the engineering and the construction management and some other administrative things, it added up to almost to the $30,000, which is what we had to contribute, and so we put it all there instead of, you know, because it made life easy and it worked. There are some other things we could do instead. We could have part of the engineering paperwork out of the grant and buy the pump, for example. That just seemed logistically like the easiest way to do that.
Yeah, okay, so this is the money that we are, we're paying the engineering as part of our contribution to the...
Okay.
That makes sense then.
Any other questions from council? Chair entertain a motion? Accept the amended budget for 2018-2019?
I make a motion that we go into the public hearing.
Okay, much to go on the public hearing?
I'll start going.
In a second. Discussion, all in favor? We're now in a public hearing. Any public comment now? We'll turn that over to the public so they can make any comment they'd like to make with regards to budgets and...
I'm finding this really confusing.
Today, today is a little more confusing. Be more specific, I'm sure it would be...
Can you please state your name, so we should hear that?
Do you want me to go to the...
Since you can't write, it's got to be for recording.
I'm Mary Duggan. I'm just finding it really confusing because it doesn't really, it doesn't reflect the total amount at the bottom, or at least I don't think it does. I guess the one, the big question that I had was on the transfer to Stormhaven, $30,000 that he's added, correct?
Where are you looking, Mary?
This is on the second page. She's on the worksheet. See, we don't have copies of the budget, that's why this is really confusing.
Well, you're trying to look at the last one, and then we're doing this one because we had some comments on the revised, and then we're going to do the revised, and I think that that part is going to become public after we revise it. What do we have?
Well, she has the worksheet, she doesn't have the one that says, nobody's got a picture of it, I don't know.
And so there's definitely some more packets down here, that if there's, if we need some packets for sure, clarification that needs to be done.
Well, anyway, on the worksheet here, it says that we're transferring $30,000 to the Stormhaven water, is that correct, are we doing that?
So you're on page 12, 5?
We're on the worksheet, it's on page two.
On page two.
I don't see where it says, where it's coming from.
Transfer to Stormhaven, $30,000.
Are we doing that? I mean, I'm not questioning it, I'm just verifying it, which is in, I don't find it in the operating income under Stormhaven. I do find that interest thing comes down at the bottom of the budget, but I really think that should accurately reflect the transfer from the general fund.
Yeah, I would agree. I would say that sometimes when, in, it happens each time, or it seems to throw a little bit out, but I don't want to excuse anything on the floor, except for, I'm not sure on that $30,000 on that line out, Mary.
I'm not sure on that $30,000 either. I'm not sure that that, I know we'd already did a transfer back in years ago, so I'm not sure if I say that. So you're saying you should go out of general?
That's what it says here, you're taking it from general.
In the Stormhaven?
That's what it says. It says transfer to Stormhaven. And then when you go to Stormhaven, it says, yeah, it says transfer.
It all has to do with, it all has to do with the, you know, the matching funds, that that line item may very well be wrong.
Just questioning, and, I mean, basically what I would really like to see is bottom line number of, this is the amended, right? For 2019?
Yes.
So, um... I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time with this. I mean, the whole point of doing an amended budget is to reflect the actual, close to the expenditure of the revenue, closer than the...
Yeah, that's why we had to move those, because clearly we're over in a lot of little areas.
So, under this amended, it says total revenue is $270,692, is that accurate? And does it include the overlay through the end of June?
It won't include till the end of June, because we don't have till the end of June. That was our best guess.
I know, but it's supposed to project.
Yeah, that's our best guess.
Okay. So the original budget was 331,956, but you're saying that actually amended is closer to 270,000?
Right.
Am I following that?
Yes.
Okay. And then under expenditures, the same thing, 281,000 is the original budget, and you're projecting it to be 106,000 here today?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we still got, still got to go. We're not done with June, like you said.
But it won't probably reach that 281, most likely, but...
It's our bestest guesses.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is you can amend the budget, the whole point of amending the budget is to project to the end of June, so that you have a more accurate number of workers being in the year. So if you haven't got those numbers in here, then...
Right, and it's just, you know, as a guess, we have to get the last few, most are in, but I'm sure there's some that are not in here yet, that...
Do you see my point though?
I do see your point, and as a guess, I guess if Mary's here, she could say she did or didn't add what she thought might come in the next month. I, we found out at four o'clock that you were going to try to make it a day she didn't. I don't know.
I know, I understand, I'm not, I'm not faulting her.
No, we want to correct it, and we'll make sure it's right, so I don't, I don't take it as faulty as much as we just want to make sure if we eye something that we corrected. Not a problem. So that would be, as far as amended, then with the $30,000, I mean, if there's a question as far as the particular paperwork is...
I think that has to do with our matching funds.
I'm pretty positive it does, it got put into two columns, most likely. And so, as we go through the rest of it, we can make that note, and if it's okay to, the rest of the council will certainly clarify that and get one out, as soon as we can to reflect that current, or that proper dollar amount. I don't know if there's anything else we can do at the moment, because we have to clarify that with Mary, but I clearly think that that amount was put in two different times. What else, Mary? I know you went through, there's going to be at least one more thing?
No, that was my comment though. I'm not sure that those numbers accurately reflect your amended budget, that's all. There's just such a huge discrepancy between some of those numbers, especially that 281 down to 156, or whatever it is. Yeah, I would say that. So, you know, like I say, if you're, if you're saying you only spent 156,000 this year and you actually spent 200,000...
That'd be a problem. And for now, I'm going to use as a 156, I'm going to get clarification to make sure we get. And how would the, if they're accurate, would move forward if there's a change, that would be certainly communicated to council?
There's some big columns in here that are less than the prior year actual, so very well it could be 156.
Yeah, we had a budget that was under, but we, the overs is what we changed for the next budget, so we wasn't brushing up against those at the ceiling, seeing what would change.
But there are seven items out of the whole budget that we did change, that were originally before we tweaked a couple of the ones during the process.
Yeah, we found a couple of other things that was coming in, like our snow plowing was huge, and there was just some things that was, probably won't be next year, so...
So if you do have a huge discrepancy, if one's still in your PTIF account, your checking account, be sure that you don't go over the 700%. Yeah, they check, and they have the audit and stuff, it's clearly on the stage account and check head.
Just so you know, we're not whispering up here that there's things that 100% of fiscal year has expired, haven't seen that before, I don't think that was manually put in, I think that's just part of, well, I don't know, maybe manually put in back when, but I don't know about that.
So, on the expenditures under administration, the amended, it's the one, two, three, fourth one down on the operational budget report, the amended dues and subscriptions. Why is there such a discrepancy between prior year was 1600, current is 3,500, but the budget's $40,000? It seems so.
It does seem weird, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Some of the dues and subscriptions was taken out of a different account prior.
Then a dues and subscription account?
Then a dues and subscription, and so that's being channeled back into that, it fits more correctly in that column than where it was coming from, so that's why it's channeled into there. And we have, who'd you send it? Not the league of cities and towns, the government trust. Government trust has sent us theirs, and we did use that insurance, and it did go up.
And in the past, it came out under a different column, is what you're saying?
It did, yes.
Actually, probably two different columns that were added in that seemed to make sense more, and a dues and subscriptions, and I know it had to do with admin, office admin was...
Yeah, it was coming out of office admin.
Office admin, okay. Just seems like there's a lot of admin that is here.
Anything else?
Good catch-all.
Before we have this meeting, and open it up.
There's kind of those same, same differences that you saw on several things in there.
But there was one that was really big, right?
Yeah, that might be the biggest one, but if you look at 1,000 to 8,000 for office supplies.
Yes, just now see that one too.
30,000 to 60,000 on admin legal.
Yeah.
We've had 60 for probably last...
Probably a little low on legal.
Yeah. Kevin, there are 28, I think, or 30 that we used this year, that's what you're reading, 30.
And well, and also, we, they have a 50,000 from the government trust, we have used that.
So what that means is we don't, we usually have a full amount of the insurance, so that would now be coming out of, out of copper, just for anymore.
They sent us a letter, said we maxed.
Yes, they did. Any other questions from public? So at this point, on the amended, I do have a clarification on the amounts, to make sure they're clarified, to get back with council and the public to make sure that that is or isn't a question, and I will do that. With that being said, the chair will entertain a motion.
To leave the public hearing?
We can come out of the public hearing now, and go back into regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, to get out of public hearing and go into regular session, all in favor? Aye. We're now back in regular session. Just have to finish up the public hearing. Any discussions or comments left? If not, the chair will entertain a motion on the amended 2018-19 budget.
I'd like to maybe get some of these questions clarified before we refer this amended budget.
Here, which questions?
Like, like the totals?
Okay. If it was going, if it is right, well, I guess you don't, you'd rather get it settled tonight without passing it back first, if it is correct, for me to clarify it and then get back. So I believe that, Mary, you might be, just because you've done this a few times, day by, we need to, we need to have it done for tonight, or, excuse me, by the end, for this June meeting.
It's 2/3, isn't it? It's 2nd of June.
Or we have a special meeting to do it.
Yeah, I think the only exception to that was if the county was changing the statutory, right?
Yes, because then you don't have a true compensation here.
And that lets it go to August.
But this is the amended budget.
Correct.
This'll stand, John, as far as, well, I don't, I guess I won't make a motion then.
We need a motion, first and a second, to pass the amended budget.
I'll make a motion. Passes amended budget.
Clarification on the...
With clarification on the amounts.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Can you oppose?
Aye.
Okay. If it passes, voted John, and I will get that question answered.
Okay, we'll just look for an email on clarification.
It'll be in the next day or two, so I can communicate with Mary and find that out. Want to discuss anything before we go into public, our next public hearing? Would be item number three.
Hold on, just one moment, maybe I'll just sign something or something.
I guess to keep it straight, well, we've got the three, there'll be one, and there's a signature page. We could have a resolution there. I do have a resolution there, yeah. That'll be our next, we have to do in a regular session. I'll go into that, we'll find out. Short time would be resolution number DR 2019-06-03D, approval date, June 3rd, 2019. Short time resolution approving Daniel County general operation budget, water enterprise budget, and Stormhaven water budget for fiscal year 2019. I'm going to change that beside the wrong resolution, that's the next, sorry about that. Resolution DR 2019-06-03C, June 3rd, 2019. Short time resolution approving amendments to the Daniel County general operation budget, water enterprise budget, and Stormhaven water budget for fiscal year 2019. The purpose of this resolution is to approve and adopt the fully amended budgets presented in the public hearing held June 3rd, 2019, to accommodate changes to the adopted revenue and or expenses. Whereas a legislative body of the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, never reviewed and considered and adopted the budget prepared by the budget office of the town of Daniel, now we held a public hearing for public comments prior to the final budget adoption. Having adopted the budget, does hereby wish to amend the adopted budget for fiscal year 2018-19. The public hearing was properly noticed and public comments solicited and considered, be advised, accepted, and approved by the governing legislative body of the town of Daniel, that the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, hereby adopts and amends the budget for fiscal year, year July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2019. Copy of the amended budget is attached. Any comments or questions about the chair to entertain a motion for DR 2019-06-03?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Ten.
You have a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution DR 2019-06-03 passes.
See.
Okay. That should clear us, we're still in regular session, that should clear us through in taking care of the resolution for the, uh... On this one. So number three, which would be this next item, the public hearing tentative budget presented on May fifteenth, which was when we presented it, two thousand and nineteen. Adjustments and actions by the council to adopt final budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty. So that's what we'll be working on right now. Council can take a few minutes to think, and, and, let me, if you have any questions, bring it up, and we'll turn it over to the public to make sure we get any questions answered there. A little bit more, too.
What's that?
Is there anything that you want to, think we go over?
They're the same, so. It should reflect those numbers that I read, whether we changed, and the first one should reflect into this one, so the ten thousand.
That's there. So what we're looking at is the next year's budget, obviously, starting next year.
Yes, everything we just amended, we changed in the new budget. Everything we just changed in the amendment, we changed. So the new budget will be closer, although we did pretty good last year, I gotta admit, that was pretty close.
Seven line items, I agree.
That wasn't bad. Yeah, so it'll be exactly as the year before, except for those items, those seven items.
On it, please. Uh, on page two, under amendment engineering, it should be thirty-five thousand, it's thirty-five thousand.
All right, Paul. Okay, thank you. You want to make that change?
Yep. Got another one, I think it's three hundred and fifty thousand. Those darn columns.
One other thing I've seen that not there is getting a collection for this year.
We did, and we, we definitely discussed that as far as if we had the money, didn't take it, we'd be able to run that. Yeah, I, I don't know where on the budget it might be. I know verbally we discussed that, but, uh... I don't know, David, we, we talked about, we set money to sign line item for it, or did we get, we had to be dealing with it, so many, the budget, the monies?
I'm not sure if we got past the panic part of, to the money part. Yeah, the panic part took us. I don't remember.
Do you recall, I know you, you had, is that a dollar amount, do you, do you figure, I mean, we had some that didn't have a vote or a election, and we had some years that we did.
Right.
Do you remember roughly what that would have cost?
We canceled our last one.
Yeah, you have a last one.
Except for one. The reason that I'm bringing up is that the school district is talking about a school on this year, that would be a special election. And if they have it, what had happened in previous years, when they had a special election, is whatever we budgeted, we budgeted a thousand dollars, whatever we budgeted, it ended up being paid to the county to cover.
Cover our portion of that.
Whether that happens or not, I don't know, it's, we'll see.
Got it. They already had one meeting on it, let me think of two.
Hundred and fifty million dollars.
For what?
In high school and middle.
High school and grade school.
That'll work great.
I didn't go too smooth and over, I couldn't answer a lot of questions myself, and that. So that's a good, for our budget purposes, though, that certainly could come into play.
Right.
You just bug up your miscellaneous maybe and leave it there or something.
There probably should be a line item for that, shouldn't there?
Maybe, I don't know.
I'm not seeing that. Well, it wouldn't be in there because we don't use it, haven't used it yet, but you would think there would be.
Just trying to discuss, I don't remember a mount, I just remember talking about it after it came up last meeting. We could, we could put a miscellaneous for now, and that way.
This link is happening.
It could be, we could let, do a line item and do a total and, and, and write that in before we.
Do you think a thousand will cover them? It'd be easy to add a zero to that, huh?
I think we only have something like seven hundred, maybe not even that, maybe seven hundred registered voters.
CDVG say we have a hundred seventeen, or a thousand seventeen.
No registered voters, seventy-seven per population.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure they purged, so I'm not sure.
Well, that's a good guess. Let's just add a zero to that, because they're already a hundred dollars. We can blame it on the same line, on the same call.
We'll page that on there.
It's right below the thirty-five. So page two.
We ought to make a note in there, though, maybe.
Yes, we could. Election.
Twenty. Okay.
At least that's a start with it.
Unless we add the miscellaneous for voting. Any other line item that council can see, or anybody else so much going on?
I think snow would not be able to go.
We went high, we went lower, and...
I'm optimistic.
Yeah. For snow or for, for dollars.
Cut it in half, maybe we'll have another good winter.
You know, we've had low, we've had a high, we went seventeen, we figured this is a booming year, we dropped that a little bit, but maybe tomorrow, next year, a big booming year. Counsel, a thought on that crystal ball? I mean.
Hey, anybody want to guess?
It's going to snow like crazy.
Put it in at least where we were this last year.
Well, I mean, we, we thought about that feeling, so we finished out the budget to, to make it all work, I mean, we can adjust.
See, but you can see the year before was only seventy-five hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good.
It's close to that big year, it's close enough.
It's almost double what our bad year was. That's all we could do, is just say, woo-hoo.
We could at least leave it the same, instead of lowering, maybe lower to fifteen.
We, we did, seventeen eight to fifteen, but the, if you look at the year before, between that seventy-five hundred, being a couple grand less than the biggest year we had.
It was only seventy-five hundred in the budget year before.
But in twenty seventeen is twenty-three.
So this was a down year, next year will be up?
I don't remember twenty seventeen being that much, so there you go.
You know, and, and quite honestly, whether we change two thousand now or amend it at the end, if we don't, it's going to.
I remember seventeen, it smelled this much every night.
And we plowed it.
And we plowed it.
Two inch minimum.
Every no more.
So, Marion, it looked like, I mean, we consider that, that two thousand, maybe we'll hit that with an amended, a little bit later on the, on the fifteen, unless council wants to change it.
That's, that's the best guess, I mean.
I agree.
Don't know.
Any other comments from anybody else?
And we, we don't even really know the price that Chet County is going to charge us either.
We've not got that in our local agreement, yeah.
So. We don't know how much all it will be, it's hard to say. I guess when we run out of money, we'll just quit plowing, huh? Okay.
So no comments from the public? Any other comments from council? If none, with that note, note being changed to one thousand on miscellaneous, that noted, chair will entertain a motion to, uh, on the general fund budget for nineteen.
And the note with the admin engineering for to go up to thirty-five thousand as well.
Yes, that was an offer correction earlier, correct?
Yeah. We just applied over.
So that may, that would be nineteen both the motion.
So moved.
You have a motion?
That's motion.
Adjustments? You have a second?
I second it.
You have a second? Any other questions, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey? Chair will entertain a motion to go out of public hearing and back into regular session.
So moved.
Let's go first.
Second.
First and a second to go out of public hearing into regular session. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now back in regular session. I'd like to go over the resolution that accompanies what we just discussed. Resolution number DR twenty nineteen oh six oh three D. Approval date, June third, twenty nineteen. Short time resolution approving Daniel Town general operation budget, water enterprise budget, and storm haven water budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty. The purpose of this resolution is to approve and adopt the purpose of proposed budgets presented in the public hearing June third, twenty nineteen. Resolutions, whereas a legislative body in the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, having reviewed, considered, and adopted budgets prepared by the budget office of the town of Daniel, has held a public hearing for public comment prior to financial budget adoption. The tentative budget were available for public inspection and the public hearing with proper notice and public comments solicited and considered. Be it revised, uh, excuse me, be it resolved, accepted, and approved by the governing legislative body of the town of Daniel, that the town of Daniel, political subdivision of the state of Utah, hereby adopts these budgets for the fiscal year twenty ele, July eleventh, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Copy of the budget is attached. Any comment on that? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion to accept.
You have a motion?
I have a second.
You have a second? Any discussion on the resolution? None? All in favor? Aye. Any comments?
I got a question on that fire resolution.
It's coming up.
Coming up?
It's coming up, yep. And then that's even the year that you need.
It's one, right behind.
This one?
Yeah.
And now, um, item number four, fireworks and open flame restrictions resolution will open up for common, plain?
Hey? Do we, we always had to call the county to get a fire permit, or we're going to start calling the handles down?
Fire permit for what? Fireworks or burning?
For, uh, for burning open flame in a outside.
I have not heard that.
You just, just call in.
Yeah, you still have to call the county, not the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Call dispatch.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, sheriff's dispatch.
That's why I want to.
Call them when you get done.
Yeah, they're looking at the clearing index and a few things like that before they'll let you burn, but.
So each year we put this out, and it seems like each year we do it in July, which of course, we counted a month earlier this year, so nothing's changed as far as the boundaries for those, uh... Basically, a fire restriction, uh, is just the same, and we want to be in front of it this year, and so, anyone have any questions on that?
Other side, the members.
Okay, so I'll read the, the resolution, it would be number DR. DR twenty nineteen oh six oh three B. June sixth, twenty nineteen. Short title fireworks and open flame restriction. Purpose, to establish a policy of fireworks and open flame restrictions during hazardous fire conditions from now through September twenty nineteen. The resolution, whereas the Daniel Town council has, has the duly elected governing body of the town of Daniel, mindful of its capacity and duty to care for public safety, the Daniel Town council declares that the danger wildfire is extreme within the town of Daniel from now to September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. And hereby declare that fireworks or any other open flame shall be prohibited in all areas south of three thousand south, uh, in the town of Daniel. The council, I'll read that again, the fireworks or any other open flame shall be prohibited in all areas south of three thousand south in the town of Daniel. So that would be when you recall the county, if you're going to be doing any fire burning, does that, does that answer your question?
I can't understand what you're saying.
If that answers your question with regards to the fire, about answering the, the county, I mean, call the county and not.
No, I just was wondering if you had to report to the Daniel Town too.
The county, this is all about just the fireworks and things, yeah. The council further states that a person who negligently, recklessly, or intentionally causes or spreads a wildfire shall be liable for the cost of suppressing that wildfire, regardless of whether the fire begins on private land, public land, land owned by the state, federal land, or tribal land.
Fireworks.
He's north of.
Yeah, he's north, on the north side.
I think they should say unintentionally. Intentionally, I think it's unintentionally.
I think you're right.
Because regardless, if you start it.
Intentionally or unintentionally. Let's strike that word and change.
Well, I, I think negligently is unintentionally, and the intentional is if you.
Got both pieces.
If you're, you start a fire for a hot dog roast or something like that.
Well, and this fire is, is for open burn, field burn, and things, if you have a fire pit, that, that has not been considered in any of these fire plans for private fire pits.
This is.
Open fire.
Yeah.
Open flame.
Yeah. And I believe it would be for open flame, for general burning of. Ag, agiture, not a private residence, little burn fire pit. I know from the county, that's how they look at it.
Yeah, cooking fire is different regulation than.
Than a open burn.
It is.
So the, that's how we understand is open burn, for a field or fence line or something, rather than a private residential fire.
So the reason we're passing this is the county fire, marshal asked us to have this. That gives them a tool that they are able to go out and say, you can't burn here.
Yeah, I've already talked with them, and I understand what they want, and they understand what I want.
Right on.
We're working it good. I was wondering how to get you guys approval too.
No.
So, any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion to accept the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, you're back.
It doesn't seem to be the best advice for an open flame, it's. It leaves it open to interpretation.
Okay. Do you want to put in a specific word to describe an open flame?
I don't know, it can get pretty, pretty complicated. What would you suggest?
I'm just here to.
I know, but we're pulling on your experience.
Good question.
My wife told me to keep my mouth shut.
Well, you blew it.
No, I mean, that, that, that could leave room to interpretation, and, and, no open flame, I mean, that would be the, I mean, that's like the only cab yacht, because the open flame would be for the ag burning. No, I mean, that could leave room to interpretation, and no open flame, I mean, that would be the, I mean, that's like the only caveat, open flame would be for the ag burning, but I understand how someone could not see, or might not understand the difference.
Open flame except in a contained fire pit, or something like that.
And I could put the, is that something you want to do, or does the council want to entertain that?
That has been the position of the counties for, for.
Well, open flame, it's anything that's not contained in some kind of a burning upper.
And that's kind of why it's contained in their contained fire pit.
But it's.
They can open it, flame is.
Does not say that, so.
I mean, I think it's a fire pit.
Want to put a fire pit and put the wording in, so it doesn't seem, be used to somebody, or?
What did they say at the fires, they just said open flame?
In this resolution, the wording does say that, so we probably, if we don't want the wording, open flame, to have some people interpret it differently than what we understand, we probably ought to fine tune it, as you mentioned.
Uncontained flame?
The wording would be such as, I mean, the fire pit, we want to clarify, would be appropriate.
That would be the only exception.
Right, which is not instead of the flame, but it doesn't quite say that. Anybody have any wording on that last sentence?
That's probably the best one that could come up, but.
So what would you put?
I would put.
Accept improved fire pit?
Accept improved residential fire pits.
An approved, what's an approved?
Contained?
Improved.
What's an improved?
I would say improved.
It's on the law. I mean, you got a pit, you have a fire pit, it's not just.
I would say you'd have your clear area, I'm not far, but, now, would they call them up in the hill, improved?
Pardon?
Do they call them up in the forest, improved?
No, they just say no open flame, and that's what they mean.
Yes.
That's what they mean.
That's how I read it too.
What they say is no flame except in a campground, that's what they mean.
So the forest service called an open flame, and this says an open flame, but the forest service, well, depending on the place, during no burn, they don't let any of those work, right? Except for the campground.
They literally have them in the campgrounds, and that's in the designated fire pits.
And that's it, now that campground, we've dug up, yeah. So, let's just word it to where, I don't think we want to include private residence fire pits in this, I don't.
Just hold on for it. If a fire pit, if a fire pit's putting out ambers, and it goes out, out into the neighbors, or your own fields, and starts a fire, and you actually started it, because it wasn't a closed flame. There wasn't anything to suppress burning ambers flame.
Okay, so the word or wording would be that.
It says.
Leave it?
Leave it.
Okay. Discussion is leave it? Do you want to take a motion to accept?
So we're saying that if you live south of 3,000 south, you can't have a, you can't have a cookout in your backyard on 4th of July. I don't know, the state fire marshal says that those, there's a difference between a cooking fire and a campground.
And that's not considered.
But we're not saying either of those, we're saying open flame, which, which I would interpret as a fire.
Yep, so you have both screen suppressor, amber.
No, we're not saying that, we're saying open flame.
Give me the wording to clarify.
That. If that cookout starts a fire. Starts, starts up.
But we're not saying, if it starts a fire, we're saying you flat out can't do it.
No, it's a, so the forest service says no open flame, but they also, they, in their campgrounds, they let you have it inside those things, we're letting those people have it.
Sure, right now, we say you can't do it, in this document.
If you interpret open flame as a fire pit, which I don't consider an open flame in a fire pit, I consider burning the ag, the ag stuff, so I don't. But that's what we're talking about, so I could totally be wrong, and everybody else, and I'm certainly open to putting a word there to clarify whatever we need to clarify, that we can all use our personal fire pits.
Because I don't, I don't think we want to prevent people from having.
Not at all.
A fire in their backyard, do we?
But that's contained.
So somehow.
It's not open, it's contained.
Somehow we got it, but contained is pretty vague.
It's not really.
But what I would call contained might be different than what you would call contained. Let's say improved. I, yeah, let's just hope we don't have to worry about it.
If you build a fire in your backyard, and there's rocks around it, it's not contained, but if you have something around the canopy, it's contained.
So contained?
Ebert?
I thought standing there with a garden hose, man, is contained.
Most of us do.
You know, I mean, if you're, if you're got control of it, it's contained.
As long as you have the hose, huh?
That's right.
If the kid has it, you're not contained.
I'm fine with either, I can have the word contained, I have no problem, it makes it a little more specific, and call it contained, and.
I just don't want to prevent people.
Does that have a problem with anybody calling it contained?
No, I hope not.
Well, I think you're still open to interpretation of contained.
And you are, you're, so I, I mean, that's why I'm asking.
The guy down there, he had a hose, but he didn't.
A broader definition will work more in advantage for the town, than to try and restrict it, because all of a sudden, you bring up a whole bunch of subjects and areas. So, I would leave it as broad as possible.
Lawyers are gonna love this one.
Well, that's, that's why the legal costs are going up.
That's right.
So Kim, you're saying leave it, leave it at open flame?
I would. That's just my.
So, 20 people in the room, there's 10, at least 10 different interpretations of what that means, so.
It's why I started saying that, ditch that, it's not contained.
That's kind of how my mind is in that particular arena.
I, I like, I like contained and uncontained, and hereby, so maybe something like, and hereby declares fireworks or other, any other uncontained, open flame.
Okay, you fine with that, anybody else on uncontained?
Yep.
Have you, you have a hand up?
I think you should leave it as it is.
You know, uncontained brings it just a little tighter in that, at least to tell somebody to read that it needs to be contained, whether it stops anybody or not.
Well, it can be, it can be contained in their field.
Yeah, I'd mercy, it's just been contained since the day.
You're absolutely right, once again, it's contained.
Contained to Wausau County.
Contained at a residential house, a site, leave it.
Has the forest service already defined what an open flame is, or?
Only from what he, I mean, I believe that that's what an open flame is, because we just heard from that side of things, but I, once again, my understanding, just, and I'm not a forest servant, but I have their open flames. Anything that's not contained, a fire pit is a contained, not an open flame, so I, I didn't think that wording was out of whack.
If it's already been defined by forest service, we can just refer to that and say, as defined by forest service.
Well, I have a problem saying that, when Wausau County's the one, our fire authority.
Define it as a, of the burden.
We would have a problem.
Barry?
Does contained and controlled help resolve that?
Once again, I find out those words as well, I mean, I, if someone thinks that open flame is just so open, and then they don't understand the upside, I totally understand it, and so we can bring some more words to clarify it, and that's fine too. Which words would the council like to add, so we can?
I don't know, because now I think that we should leave it, and. It's not a problem if it's contained. It's when it's not contained, that's gonna be an issue. If you had a cookout in your backyard, and it got away from you, it's still an issue.
But this is saying you can't have a cookout in your backyard. See, I'm not, I don't see it saying that, and it, well, it says you can't have an open flame in your backyard. I understand that, I totally get, now, some people could certainly understand that.
So maybe we leave it that way, and not the forest.
You can hear forest if a fire starts, otherwise, it won't be a forest, it won't have one.
Yeah.